Uh, when I lift up.
Uh. No.
Oh.
Is it not just the?
When I have a, do you have a TV that's about as big as that screen back there?
You're uh.
Watching the golf match.
We start with uh. Uh, you front the page.
I'm doing so.
It'll refresh it.
Okay, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. This tab, um, last meeting we started the electronic voting. So, it's for a lift tab as that. So like, everybody will motion and say, that's normal. Vote happens, you'll just match refresh, and then it'll show yay or nay.
This is wrong on the front row, I don't know why.
See your vote on the screen.
I know, right?
Okay.
I can show you the zoom, so any questions will come up here.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have pictures from you guys last week? Time off, we have pictures? Lots of over anything?
Uh, the, next meeting.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
I wanted to get us as close to it as possible.
Okay. But you can do it on, you're doing it on here.
Yeah.
October. That sounds good.
We already did the, I forget, November fifteenth. Didn't we do that, a meeting ago? Because of the early elections here.
Change of meeting. I think we did, or we talked about it, I don't think we officially did.
I feel like, I think we did. Check, make sure, pretty sure we made it to the fifteenth. Yeah, I think we moved it to the fifteenth.
Be in a minute somewhere, I could start looking if you want me to.
Yeah, I'm sure somebody does.
I'll do it. Then there.
We officially made November the fifteenth because of the early elections. Is that, did we do?
What do you mean, made November the fifteenth?
Instead of meeting on the first, we're meeting the fifteenth, is that right? The gap between the elections over.
I think we're meeting on the eighth.
On the eighth?
Yeah.
That's right, that eighth.
It's a bad situation.
Yeah.
But they'll, because early voting.
Yeah, early voting will be added here, yeah.
Okay.
He said the eight.
Early voting is here, but election day will be at the church.
Okay, that's right. We're seeing that in the minutes, but I guess it is.
Might've been even two months ago that we did it.
Yeah, I think it actually was two months ago.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to call the town of Bowling Springs' October meeting to order. First item is to adopt the agenda. Council, you've had a chance to review the agenda, are there any concerns or amendments?
Move the agenda to be adopted.
All right, the, uh, motion has been made by Mr. Green. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Thomas. All those in favor can cast your vote. As I, or if you are opposed, uh. All right, the adoption of the agenda passes unanimously. Are there any citizens present that would like to comment on an item that is not listed on the agenda? Please step to the podium and, and state your name and. And you have up to three minutes, thank you.
How much time?
Three minutes.
That all?
Yeah.
Well, my name's Leonard Self, and I live on, uh, Glen Avenue, one oh seven, and I'm not the one to put the note on the trash can either that time. But anyway, uh, concern I have is the speed limit on, uh, South Main Street. Before they put the bike trail in, forty-five zone did not start till the skating rink, the old skating rink. Then after they put the bike trail in, they moved forty-five up on top of the hill there, on South Main Street. And it's an extremely dangerous place, especially if you're trying to pull out from Glen Avenue. You got Flannille Church Road there on one side. And if you're coming from Flannille Church Road to, uh, to turn onto Glen Avenue, the time you pull out, somebody's coming over the hill, and then you got that god awful hump that they put in when they put the bike trail down through there. And you cannot turn in fast. But I would like to see the speed limit, I mean, anywhere else in town, the main streets is thirty-five all the way to, uh, Pisces limits. And I think it needs to be that on, uh, uh, South Main Street. And speaking of that street, it's not been paved in about thirty-seven years. I think it's on the list, but way down the list, but there's potholes on it that need to be repaired or the street paved. How much more time do I have?
About a minute.
Huh?
About a minute.
Well, my wife wanted me to mention this, that we need to rename the street or rename South Glen. Can't get anything from UPS there, it goes to, uh, South Glen. Uh, part of the stuff, if you order from another store that delivers, it's liable to go there. UPS used to deliver there if I put one oh seven Glen Avenue, Bowling Springs, two eight oh one seven, but now it goes to South Glen. But now I'm lucky, the lady that lives there, she always calls me. And my cousin across the road, he has to have everything sent to his sister's house because anything he orders goes to one oh six, and he goes down there, oh, we've not seen it, I, whatever it is, they keep. But I don't know what's in the system that, and I've done it myself, punch in Glen Avenue, and it automatically reverts to South Glen Drive. And I don't know why that needs to be done. And so I've been at that address actually, uh, since nineteen fifty-nine, so it ain't like I got a new address there. And it's been in my name since nineteen eighty, so it ain't like I've just moved there and changed the address. So, I don't know what can be done in the system to fix our addresses where the computers always revert to, you know, don't revert to South Glen. Like, she's entitled to rename the street, or rename South Glen Drive. I guess that's it.
All right, thank you very much, wish us well. Any other citizens present that would like to comment on something not on the agenda? All right, next we have an update from Gardner Web University.
Good evening, everyone, excited to be here again. Uh, just several different events going on, running through those in chronological order here. Uh, tomorrow, we actually have a prayer, community prayer gathering tomorrow at Da- Dover Chapel at eleven thirty, so that's open to the community. We encourage you to come out and attend and pray for the town and pray for the university, uh, if you so wish. Uh, October sixth, uh, we have something other than athletics going on, we actually have theater, GW Theaters presenting the quote, "Odd Couple", uh, is a play that they're putting on, that is October sixth. Uh, we have partnered with CBS for a flu vaccine clinic on the, um, fifth and sixth, so encourage you to come out and take advantage of that. Uh, keep everybody healthy. And then, uh, big event, uh, homecoming, October twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, it's that weekend. Uh, we have events ranging all three days, uh, starting with a Hall of Fame Gala on the Friday night. Obviously, all the festivities on Saturday, including the parade. Um, and then going from that, we actually have an event on Sunday at Dover Chapel as well. Uh, last thing I have is some thanks, uh, we have, last count, fourteen local businesses that have partnered in our Bulldog Community Discount Program, so just wanted to give a shout out to the community and thank them for partnering. Uh, for those that don't know, um, a lot of businesses already offer a discount to a student, staff. If you show your, your ID card, it may be a free drink, it may be ten percent. What it, McDonald's actually just added twenty-five percent for us. What it allows us to do though is you get the cool sticker on the door, so to speak, but then we're also able to, uh, advertise that and push that to our students as a benefit, uh, so that they know that the town supports and appreciates their business as well. So, uh, again, just wanted to say thank you to those fourteen local businesses that are partnering in the area. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next item up for review is the consent agenda, this is, uh, the first month that we have.
Got one more.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm so sorry, uh, Ms. Cribb from the Chamber of Commerce, I apologize. Got excited about the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, thank you mayor and council for this opportunity, thank you Justin and Noah for, um, the great communication. I'm Christine Cribb from Cleveland County Chamber of Commerce, I've been in this position for a year. I came from the west coast, um, where I'd ran the largest chamber per capita in the state of Washington, and I did a nationwide search, and it's an absolute thrill to serve the entrepreneurs and business community of Cleveland County here. It's where I call home, and I'm thrilled to be here. So I wanted to give you a little update of what we've accomplished in the last year. But first, I'd like to introduce my right hand that keeps my calendar straight and keeps me in line, which is Catherine Pennington, who is, uh, the administrative assistant of the chamber. Um, so first, I want to talk about the vision and mission of the Chamber of Commerce. The vision is Cleveland County will prosper to be a unique destination to live, work, and play. The mission is to strengthen business, promote economic development, and enhance community vitality. But the bottom line of all that is that our job is to help businesses succeed. And we do that through resources, uh, education, marketing, and networking opportunities. Thank you. We are a nonprofit, I serve, uh, over five hundred and five members now, and we've gained one hundred members in the last year. Um, we, I serve aboard the directors of twenty, and a staff of Catherine and I, and a few part-time people, and a couple, um, interns from Gardner Web, actually. Um, we have ambassadors of about fifteen people that are volunteers, and then we have priceless volunteers that help us, uh, do our job. Serving members, I mentioned, resources, anything a member wants, um, in a business, if they get a letter from L and I and they don't know what it is, we make sure we find out who they need to talk to to solve their problem. Education, we offer lots of luncheon learns and conferences and, um, just e- education opportunities to further their, um, business knowledge. Marketing, we're really into selling, um, sponsorships and advertising to help get logos out there for, for members. And then networking, we started in, this is a little bit later, but we started in, when I got here with the business after hours, we've added a member luncheon once a month that has about forty to sixty people in attendance. And then next year, we're adding a business over breakfast as a networking opportunity. So, new programs for two thousand twenty-two, we offered frozen Friday, which you guys won last year, am I right? Frozen Friday, or thanks a latte. Uh, membership luncheon we added, the wine cellar event where we sold raffle tickets for twenty-five dollars and gave away one hundred bottles of wine. Um, a luncheon learns are twice a month on topics. Uh, this, the end of this month, we're offering an economics summit with keynote speakers from all over this region, from local to state level to, in Richmond, Virginia, there's a person coming to speak. Uh, thanks a latte, the, the little trivia questions that go out, somebody answers, and we deliver frozen mokas or, uh, pumpkin spice lattes to the entire team. Nonprofit Network is a network created for, uh, quarterly social time for nonprofits to learn, we bring in speakers that they would otherwise not be able to afford, and, um, have them speak to nonprofits on board retention, fundraising, social media, things like that. Uh, we also launched social media, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, we launched, uh, teacher appreciation, and we visited all seventeen schools. Took us about four days to deliver everything, but it was really fun. Um, and then we have member mentors, where members that have been members of the chamber for years help nurture and mentor new members. New for two thousand twenty-three, we're gonna launch a professional women's breakfast, uh, in February. And, uh, business over breakfast, which will be quarterly starting next year. And then return of the congressional luncheon that I don't think has been done since before COVID. So, that's a little update, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. It's a pleasure to serve the chamber and to serve the business community. Any questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
There you go, thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Okay, now moving to the consent agenda, these items are considered routine and can be approved with, uh, just one motion and voted on all at once. Uh, however, if there is a council member who wishes to, uh, discuss any of these items, it can be pulled out and added to, um, added to new business. So if, if council has had a chance to review these things, a summary of them is included as well in your packet. If there is not discussion, uh, needed for any of these, we can just pass them all at once rather than each. There's no discussion, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
A motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented, including adoption of many minutes, review land use, uh, plan RFP, selection of the firm for the asset inventory assessment, I believe it was, uh, grants, and then animals on public streets ordinance revision.
All right, thank you, Mr. Evers, for the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second for Ms. Gant. All those, let it be known by your electronic vote. In favor or against?
I wanna make note, I was first that time.
That's a good game. All right, the consent agenda has been adopted, moving on to old business. Uh, we have Michelle Brown with us via Zoom. Who will discuss the results of the pay and classification study.
I'm not sure if you all are connected.
I'm not now.
Does it have you a button to connect, or?
Meeting passcode.
Says passcode now.
It went back to the passcode.
Okay. Christine, do you have any chamber trivia you'd like to give us while we're getting?
My daughter's doubles tennis team is now leading three to two at Forest View, I can give you that update.
Uh, while he's doing that, I'll tell you a story about passcodes, a friend of mine, very good, laptops were just coming out, and I'm older than most of you. He got his first laptop, and I was asking him, I said.
Uh, I don't know if it's in the digits.
How's that going? He said, I can't get in it. Said, why not? He said, won't take my passcode, my password. Said, why not? He said, every time I put it there, it just puts those little stars up there. For the guys in the back, that was Jerry Green, then they all know who that was.
So it's TM eight, EWS.
What's it different than the other one?
There you go.
I guess we need to mute ours.
Yeah, if y'all wanna mute, and if you need to ask a question, just unmute.
Okay.
It took me completely, I got browse off. That's not good.
All right.
It's true.
Seven, seven, six, eight, three, two, seven, two, five, six, zero.
I've zoomed to Chrome. I don't have anything else open either.
Huh.
Well. Doesn't seem right, does it?
No.
It's a back here. I'm using V. Okay. Let's try this right here. Is this one down here, TM eight?
Can't see you. Maybe, just.
Yeah, I'll scoot it up.
Well, it keeps, uh, I had you in and then it kicked me back out.
Let's see, I did it this last time. There goes.
Ms. Brown, we almost have it worked out.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. We'll have to get the agenda pulled back up too, from the.
Oh, we understand completely.
How are we supposed to hear her?
Not sure.
I can have her through the speakers if you don't have her on the audio there.
I think, I think we have a live though, it's muted.
We'll keep all ours muted unless you have a question, or it'll do the echoing. Can mute on the, unless you have a question.
He keeps kicking it out.
If you're, if you unmute and you speak, it's gonna, camera's gonna go to you.
Update or something.
Yeah.
See it? So I think it's just, I think it's restarting now, so that should work.
Sorry, everybody. Ms. Brown had intended to be here in person, she had suffered a back injury. Having a few too many flashbacks with the Zoom problems. Ready to roll?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Brown, we are ready, I believe, so you have the virtual floor?
Put this near.
Any volume?
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, well, and, and truly, my apologies, I, I really do not prefer to do these by Zoom, but I, um, I can't sit down for more than about fifteen minutes at a time, and that really, um, has restricted travel. So, um, I've created a stand-up desk here in the dining room, and, um, that's how we'll go this evening. So, thank you, and again, my apologies, I know this is a confusing mess at times, so, um, I'm gonna go back through with you. I know we have a couple of new folks that weren't in attendance at the first meeting, council member Green and council member Gant. So I want to, um, say hello to all of you, I'm sorry I didn't get to meet you in person. But what I'm gonna do is review the packet of information that Justin has provided you. And the presentation really should not take very long, um, so there'll be plenty of time if you have questions or need clarification. But Justin has done a really good job with his cover letter explaining the process and explaining what we, what we're trying to do there in Bowling Springs. So, um, just to give you a quick rundown on my background, I retired from local government in December of two thousand seventeen as the HR director for the city of Charlotte. And I've got over thirty years of local government HR experience, and I've been working with the MAPS group since my retirement on a part-time basis. So, um, I get, since I live in Charlotte, I get a lot of the clients in the western part of the state. So I'm happy to, to be able to work with Bowling Springs. So if you would turn over, um, to page, I believe it's page fifty-six in your, the new packet that you've been provided, and it will be the MAPS Group summary report. And what this is, um, I'm certainly not gonna read. And what this is, I'm certainly not gonna read it to you. If you need something to help you sleep during the nighttime, pull this out and begin reading, it'll do the trick. But what this does, this comes from information from your employees. And part of the process of the study is to have your employees complete what we call a position description questionnaire, or PDQ for short, and we ask them to be as detailed as possible in their description of the job that they perform for Bulling Springs. And then once those PDQs are completed, they get sent to me and I review them. And then I actually, I've been back down to Bulling Springs for a second, second visit to interview your staff and just gain additional information on their knowledge, skills, and abilities, their responsibilities involved in their job. And what I do then is take that information and prepare short paragraphs, really, to summarize the work that the employees do. And this, this is used, this was used by the manager and by me to talk about the work, make sure I had everything correct, and then decide on what job classification or job title we wanted to assign to that role. So then we use this information to help us build our salary survey. We'll get to that information in a little bit. And then we'll also use this as the template to build new job descriptions for you. Now, that'll be really part of the last part of the process. So this really is the summary report, and like I said, I'm not gonna go through it page by page. So let me turn over here to your page sixty-six will be the, I believe that's where we're gonna go next. And that section is titled Pay Plan Recommendations. And what I'm gonna do is just walk you through the implementation recommendations. Do I need to stop, Justin?
No, you're good.
For a second?
Go ahead.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna walk you through the pay plan recommendations, or the implementation recommendations, and then review the new pay plan that we were recommending for you, and then the new salary schedule for you. So if you'll turn to the next page for me. And you'll see at the top, the jurisdictions that we surveyed to gather information for your salary survey. And you'll, you'll also see the spread that those cities and counties and towns have from a hiring, hiring rate in their pay plan to the maximum rate in their pay plan. And you see those range anywhere from fifty to sixty-five. And with Bulling Springs, you're currently sixty-five to seventy, which is a little out of line with what we typically see in local governments across the state. So I'm gonna, I'm recommending that Bulling Springs have a pay, pay grade spread from hiring to maximum of fifty-five percent. And then each of those grades are approximately five percent from each, well, they are five percent from each other. So they just build upon the grade as you go at five percent. And as a result of what the town has been able to do to, to limit compression, I don't think anybody can ever do away with compression between bringing somebody in at a rate that's really close to somebody who's been there for several years. You know, that's what we, we try to avoid. And you all have done really well keeping that at a minimum. So that, that impacts, that next section titled Implementation Strategy, that impacts what we recommend to the organization, because this is where the money comes into play. And we, we proposed, initially proposed two options. And option one would be that employee salaries would be adjusted to at least the hiring rate of the new range to which they would be assigned, and at least to the minimum of the new range if they have passed probation. And then in addition to that, we recommend a certain percentage also be granted to employees based on their years of service in their current role, in their current position. So in this option, option one, we're recommending a half percent adjustment to the pay of those employees who have been there. The tenure is such that they would deserve to receive the half percent per year of service in their current position. Now, the full fiscal year cost for this option, as you see, is eighty-three, four forty-nine. But we've talked about implementing with an October one effective date. So that reduces that, instead of four full quarters, you're only gonna have three full quarters. So that reduces that amount to sixty-two, five eight seven for the remainder of the fiscal year. And then if you turn to the next page, we also included option two. Both of these options will have some impact, a little impact on compression. Obviously, if we move people three-quarters of a percent, which is in option two versus a half percent, which is option one, that's gonna have a more positive impact on any compression that may exist. As you can expect and as you see, moving employees a little more in their range based on years of service in their position is gonna cost more. So the annual, the annual cost for that, option two, would be the ninety-six, seven sixty. And again, if we did that for three quarters of the year, instead of four quarters of the year, that drops to seventy-two, five seventy. And then because, well, because of the cost, frankly, a lot of times in smaller jurisdictions, we do, we do have to be very cognizant of budgets and other priorities that you all may have on your plate. So in light of that, and as I said, you've done pretty well with compression, we've recommended option one for your implementation strategy. And then additionally, what we also recommend, you see that middle paragraph in the recommendation section, to always in, in July of the year, consider moving your pay ranges, your, your hiring rate and your maximum rate for your pay ranges, moving those according to cost of living adjustments and such in your area, because you know now, I mean, it's just such a competitive time. Every, everywhere I turn and everyone I talk to talks about the difficulty in hiring and keeping up with the market. So the worst thing that can hap, not the, one of the worst things that can happen is that you have someone come in, they do a pay study, they recommend a new classification and pay plan for you, and then there are no adjustments made to that plan for the next five years. So then you're, you're back at the bottom of the barrel again, as far as your hiring rates and your maximums and your overall pay plan. And when you have another review in three to five, seven years, whoever comes in, the implementation to, the cost to, to implement the recommendations at, at that time of the study, it's, it's gonna be greater. So if you're able to bite off a little bit of the bullet every, every July and move ranges and make adjustments for employees, that is certainly preferable. And then the other thing that I would add in this section, the important notes at the bottom, as I mentioned, that what we put there was the annual implementation cost, and that goes down according to when you would choose to implement. Obviously, if you choose January first, then it's gonna go down, go down more. And then the costs, these costs do not include any adjustments that will be needed for benefits based on retirement, 401K, and those sorts of things. So then if we'll turn to the next page, you'll see this is a list of classes arranged by grade. And based on the, the study of the individual jobs, and based on the comparisons made to the market around you in those jurisdictions that we surveyed that you saw earlier, this is where we're proposing that the positions be slotted in your new pay plan. And you can see there, there's the hiring rate and the maximum rate associated with each of those jobs. And then the next page is simply the salary schedule, which, this is a really nifty spreadsheet, because this is, this is what I used to determine where I wanted your grades to fall, where I wanted the, the hiring rates and the maximums to fall. And this is a fifty-five point spread, as we talked in the very first part of the presentation. And let's say next year, you decide to move your ranges four percent. All Noah has to do is go into the, the salary schedule here, multiply that twenty-six thousand dollar figure in that top cell by one point zero four percent, and he gets a new number, plugs it in, and the entire spreadsheet changes. So it's very easy to then go in and update pay plans and update grades and those sorts of things. And as I mentioned, it's, it's quick. So that's it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions. If I don't have an answer for you tonight, I can certainly bring it back to you. I know we had several questions in the first presentation when I was down, so.
Ms. Brown, I have a question.
You can unmute, you have that.
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown.
Hi.
I do have a question. Was the study recently conducted?
Was this a recently conducted study?
Yes, yes, we used average information, which is that implemented any changes after July first. So it's FY twenty-three data.
So July first of this year? And say the data accounts for the inflation, what percentage of inflation did you use to calculate this data?
Um, I didn't use the inflation number. What we use, we use the data gathered from the pay plans from surrounding jurisdictions to get average, averages. And then we developed the salary schedule from that data and where the positions are assigned according to the, the pay ranges that are noted in that salary schedule. But when you, when you adjust, maybe this might be your question. When the other jurisdictions around you adjusted their pay ranges, so they're gonna look at CPI, they're gonna look at other market factors, and that's gonna be built in to the pay grades that they assign to their jobs. So we're getting that information from, kind of second from your surrounding jurisdictions. Where it comes into play next July, or actually March, February, when you begin your budget process, you'll wanna look at what the CPI is doing. There are lists those out there where you can ask folks what they're gonna do for cost of living increases in, in the local governments around you, and School of Government probably has something that they post on those, those, those data points. But that's, that's when you would be pulling that in for your, your next year's pay plan. So as far as using a cost of living figure, no, I, I, we don't do that.
Okay, so no inflation really was, was used, no percent of inflation?
Dr. Gant, you're, you're muted again, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so you're saying there's no inflation that was, that took place in, in these speakers? To, to come up with the salary recommendations?
The, the implementation strategies?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, no, ma'am, they're, they're what we, the way we get implementation strategies is.
From what other surrounding?
Yes.
Work, yes, workplaces.
Yeah, and once, one, once we get the, the pay ranges, and then we assign the pay ranges to the, the particular employees in your workforce, then there's a statistical analysis and spreadsheet analysis that goes into play. And we see where they're paid now, and then with the new pay range, or any credit for service, where they're gonna fall. And that's what develops those implementation costs. So it's based, those costs are based on your current employee population, what they are paid, and what we're proposing they should be paid, based on the pay grades that we gathered and the averages gathered from other jurisdictions.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was the only question I wanted to, since inflation is so high now, and I don't see any relief. They want us to think it's temporary. I don't believe it is from the literature that I've been reading. So it just costs so much more for an employee to keep up their family, just to feed the family, so.
Absolutely, yes. And some of the, I mean, just to give you an idea, I don't, I don't know the specifics as far as how much pay plans changed for all the jurisdictions this, this fiscal year, beginning of the fiscal year. But I do know that I have heard we've recommended a six percent market adjustment to the pay ranges. We've recommended, Town of Granite Parish, just north of Charlotte, recommended an eight percent adjustment to the pay ranges. So local government, I think, has found itself in a position where there is the need to recognize the inflation, and there is the need to recognize the shrinking workforce, and the need to be able to pay, to recruit new folks to come to your organization when you do have a vacancy, but also to retain, I use my hands and y'all can't see them, but that's okay, to recruit new employees into your organization when you have a vacancy, or to retain employees that you have on staff and that you don't have other folks coming and taking those folks from you. And we're really seeing, I mean, you know this, we're really seeing a lot of that in police, and we're really seeing a lot of that in public works and the labor and trades roles as well.
Uh, yes, ma'am, and I'm actually a pharmacist, and I have been for, well, I'm not gonna say how many years, but I've done a lot of hiring, which is the worst I've ever seen as far as trying to keep somebody. Because when, you know, my lead tech can go somewhere else and make ten dollars more an hour at a chain, I mean, what do you do when you've got valuable employees like that, that you just, you know, can't let go? That's been there since the businesses opened. So I, I think employees are the number one priority. And in order to keep good employees, to recruit good employees and keep them, I think we have to be really competitive with the salaries.
Yes, ma'am, and keep up with it year after year after year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from council for Ms. Brown?
I just have a comment, and I'd like to apologize to you and to the board member, the other board members, for you having to repeat this, although I really hated to miss it last month. And I'm sure that Ms. Gant did also, but I appreciate your, the work that you've done, and it's a very thorough report. And, uh, and most of the questions I have now are gonna be for Justin. I agree with Ms. Gant, I think our employees are just as valuable to us, and I think I made this comment to Justin. I think to neglect our employees is just as, as critical as, as not maintaining our water or sewer systems. I think sometimes we, we prioritize and we, and we all know, and we hear every month here, we hear what fine, upstanding, capable employees we have. And there's a lot of people, I'm afraid, that would like to maybe have them, steal them from us. And to me, that would be, that would be very, very drastic. So very much in favor of, all these, all these have qualifiers, but very much in favor of taking good care of good employees. So, so thank you for your work, thank you for your report.
I'm expected I will be back down again to do another presentation for you for the personnel policy. So hopefully, we can meet in person at that time.
Yeah, I had a quick question. So the study has, in my opinion, two components, which is benchmarks from the agency standpoint, where other agencies fall with the salaries, and then second component is longevity. Where does merit fall at in any of that? I mean, is, is merit considered, or is this just a step pace study type implementation, so that we continue? I mean, how do we build in merit so that a person could work toward more money? Or is that just by promotion? Does that make sense?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and the way you're, the way this is structured and what this, what this addresses, as you said very eloquently, the benchmarking with the other organizations being one component, and then time in position being a second component for our study. But then I understand that you all do have merit pay, and I would, I think that's great, and I strongly recommend you continue to, to use merit pay, and, and that is not built into anything that I've done. So your merit pay structure and process would stay the same, and that would allow you to continue to move your, your employees who are excelling toward the maximum of these new pay ranges that they would be assigned to, and continue to, to recognize them in that manner. So I, for what it's worth, I'm, I'm a big fan of merit pay.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Brown? We could release her from the Zoom. Looks like we have only seven minutes left on the Zoom.
I knew I needed to talk fast.
Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it. Look forward to it. Look forward to seeing you in person next time.
Thank you, I, I do too.
Feel better, yeah.
Yes ma'am, yeah, but, thank y'all, have a good rest of your week.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
All right. Okay. So we are now on page 54. If, uh, council wants to get there in the, in the packet, it's on page 54 with options to proceed. Couple of different options that we have presented. The recommendation is the one half percent increase, uh, taking effect on October 1st. Justin, if you would like to say other things, that's...
Yes sir, so I, I think the only thing I would add is along those lines, if, um, if you all wanted to implement this, uh, October 1st, what we would plan to do is bring a budget amendment back next month. Uh, as Ms. Brown stated, this doesn't include, um, any of the changes that would happen in the benefits when the salaries change. So, uh, we would figure all that out between now and next month, bring you a budget amendment that would outline all of that because it's going to have to be allocated, allocated to the different departments and to the different line items in the budget. And, um, we can do that October 1st, we can do it a different date if you all want to make it effective a different date. And I also wanted to mention that there's a note at the bottom of page 54 about council pay. Maps group did not look at that as part of their study, but, uh, staff has done some research on that and, um, those numbers are in there for your consideration as well. And again, we can, um, you all can finish talking about the staff first and go to the salary, um, or go to the council pay after that, but we can do all that in one budget amendment at whatever time you all want to do it.
So are we set on option one?
Uh, no ma'am, that was Cheryl and I's recommendation, just based on the, um, the budget number. But we can do option two and we can do it at any, at any time, so you have all those options available to you.
And I think option one was discussed because we have the American Rescue Plan funds to help offset some of the initial costs.
Yes sir, yeah, we would be using some of those, uh, this year, um, for that.
And, see, the difference in option one and two is like 13,000?
Yes ma'am.
And we're getting how much to offset?
Um, we've got, um, we've got enough funds to, to cover either of those, it would just be how much we want to allocate toward, toward this specifically.
Is that something we can afford?
Well, we, we talked about that at, uh, last month's meeting about, you know, we can afford it now, but being able to afford it later, but we didn't, we didn't get a specific answer on that.
Yeah, there are, um, you know, I feel, I feel comfortable enough being able to budget for this moving forward. The example I, I kind of keep thinking about is we bought a $40,000 tractor this year, so we wouldn't plan to have that expense next year. So that would be, you know, half of option one right there. So there are, there are things within the budget that are sort of one-time occurrences that, um, we'd have to just budget more carefully for moving forward, but, um, I feel comfortable we could implement either, either option.
I mean, overall, we're in the black, we're, we're, we have funds available, um, but until the audit's done, we don't have an exact number.
And in my opinion, like I said, employees are number one. I mean, you can go to Chick-fil-A and they'll pay you $16 an hour just to run the register. And it's so competitive out there and you don't want to lose the, uh, good employees. And we want to recruit the best employees. You know? I mean, it's, I, I mean, I, I would be for, uh, option two if we can afford it. And if that even means starting January 1st.
Would it be appropriate for you to bring back total numbers for option one and option two, including benefits and everything next month and us?
Or we need to, we need to move forward with one of them? We, we could do that, my hesitation with doing that this month, because that, that is kind of the first thought that I had was, um, I, I don't want to put more specific numbers out there, um, for our employees and then... Back off. Maybe, maybe it goes a different route and then they get their expectations set on one thing and something else happens.
But the consequence is if we move forward with a higher option now is to do without in the future or to increase taxation to cover the...
Yes sir, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a pot and the pot doesn't get bigger.
So that's the two, that's the two, two portions of this, okay? Well, we move forward and, and reward and really recruit and help the employees, which is what we need to do. And, uh, the benefit of that, we have to tell people, well, we might have to increase your tax a cent or two cent. And people hate to hear that, but that's just the reality, you get what you pay for. You get good employees, you pay good employees.
Exactly, and you're going to retain those employees.
It costs money, so, you know, I, I understand the whole philosophy and I'm, I'm good with either option, but, uh, also worry about the, the town's liability in the long run, so that's just my opinion.
And I, I concur with that, but also don't think we should be any more reluctant to raise taxes for salary than we are to replace, to replace a water line.
Exactly, that's what I think.
And, and I think we would just have to be in a position where we feel comfortable enough that we, that I feel comfortable in defending that to the citizens as to why, anytime we increase taxes, that we have enough, that we're, that we can convince them that it's for the good, for the, for the overall good.
Yeah, if we have the good employees and somebody calls and needs something and we're, we're right there, it's water, trash, police, I mean, um, it's going to make them happier and want to live in Bullen Springs. Recruit more people to the, living in the town and increase taxes, if so be it.
Well, the, the study offers some, some good points, in other words, raising that, that minimum on a consistent basis, so you don't end up bringing somebody in, making more than somebody's been here five years, it's not a good situation. We also have an option that's not listed on here to pay part of this as a one-time bonus. I mean, that, that could be a consideration as well.
Sure.
Well, if, if we say we have sufficient funds.
Then that, the employees get taxed heavily with one? I mean, if you're talking a significant amount, I mean...
But you're looking at money you've got now that you won't have...
Next year, potentially.
Future fiscal years, potential. I mean, you, you won't have our funds in, in one year or two years.
So are you saying we can't afford it or are we out to, if, if we done something like that, we're going to have to, uh, find other means of, uh, collecting funds like taxes?
Yeah, you have, I mean, growth in your tax base. And then you have tax, increase in taxes. Those are our main two revenue sources, is that not right?
I'm a little lost because the half percent per year of service is a one-time deal to catch us up into a pay range of low and high, right? And actually, we're way above the competitive pay scale. We're 65 to 70% between low and high right now and we're going back to 55%. So to me, it's like if we wait to do three quarters in January 1, that money, additional money in the next year could have been paid out by a half percent now in a quarter over everybody, right? That $13,000 difference, we could have spent that in one quarter between everybody. And we're actually contracting our overall low to high-end scale of every position, even though we're moving it up with cost of living year over year. And as she mentioned too, there's, you know, cost of living and merit raises that can happen based off of criteria that Justin and everybody agrees on to move faster through that pay scale. And by the way, that pay scale is moving with cost of living increases, as she was mentioning 4%, right? So, I mean, technically, if we're in the black, the future is we're going to remain in the black with salary.
Cost of living, inflation right now is way more than 4%.
Well, I know that, but that's what the...
So this is just to get them, get our employees caught up?
Yes, I, I understand that.
And then?
We're getting caught up and we're better defining our pay scale. And it's going to be a moving pay scale every year, it's going to grow with the economy.
And, and to your point, another, another thing to consider is that this past year, I think we had, Rondell will tell me tomorrow if I got it wrong, but it was 30 to $40,000 in growth from, uh, just sales tax. So there, there is some of that just economic growth that naturally is going to occur as the economy, you know, continues to, to go up. So there'll be some, some things we can do as far as budgetary items that we can, you know, wait two years to buy some piece of equipment or whatever it might be, and then there'll be some of that growth. So I know $100,000 just for a ballpark sounds like a lot, but really some of those other things are just offsetting as everything kind of continues to move up.
And to everybody else's point, you know, employees, I absolutely agree, that's important. We should be making that as an equal or higher priority decision compared to, you know, our water lines and stuff, but we haven't, I mean, we just wrote the fiscal budget for 22 to 23, we're going to have the opportunity every year to go through and make them priority in every budget, right? So, I mean, if we are strategic enough about it, we can remain in the black and still take care of our employees.
I agree.
So, I, personally, I'm more in favor of start October 1 with the half percent per year of service increase and, uh, let's adjust this pay scale to match the 55% low to high.
I suggest option two.
I think it's responsible and feasible.
Because of the inflation is so high right now, I, I suggest we start with option two and go forward. That's what I'd, because that, she didn't, I mean, she didn't take inflation, inflation's nine, 10, 11%?
She didn't take inflation, but when, when she took other surrounding salaries, then, then inflation is, is in there, because the other places are dealing with the same issues we are as they adjusted their pay.
But she couldn't tell us how much...
She didn't directly do inflation, but the other, it's, it's in there, I mean...
Yeah, but she couldn't tell us how much inflation.
Well, she was just looking at competitive salaries around us.
Right, right.
Which is what any salary study is going to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Everybody's fighting inflation.
Everybody.
Yeah, nobody's getting eight and a half percent raises to cover inflation.
Exactly, so that's why I'm...
Within the last three months, I mean, that's not happening.
That's why I'm saying if we went with the, the higher option two and get them caught up where they need to be, if it wasn't for inflation, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even think it would be, you know, that big of a deal, but every little bit helps, I mean, and, you know, we may look, we could lose some very important employees and... I just think that's important to recruit them and keep them, the good ones.
And so one thing I'll add to, to that point, um, and that, that Mr. Edwards made me sort of think of is a, um, you know, something we've discussed internally is we could, going forward in different budget years, cover different, um, benefits for employees. So right now, we pay for health insurance, but we don't pay for vision and dental insurance. So if that's something that we wanted to bring these salaries up to a certain point and then also, you know, budget for those additional benefits, either at this time or, or in future years, that's, um, another way to kind of put some more money back in people's pockets and, um, and still take care of some of our employees, so I don't know if that helps or hurts the discussion, but I thought it was a good idea and I wanted to throw it out there.
How many employees do we have?
28.
So over bi-weekly pay periods, right? So it ends up being like $500 an extra paycheck if we went to, well, it depends on their years of service though, too.
Yeah, it depends on their pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it varies, so I, I, that's a, that's a good point though, so some of the, um, some employees were, um, hired at a certain rate where they won't see an increase because they are within the pay range currently. Uh, but there are other employees that have been hired that weren't at that rate and then have not moved up into that scale or into that range, so they're the ones that'll bump up. And if there's somebody within that range, they'll get that, um, percentage increase from the years of service.
If we don't spend all of the ARPA money allotted to us, what happens to it?
Uh, it goes back in the fund balance. So we haven't specifically allocated money for this, we just haven't spent the ARPA money that's basically either in fund balance or we've got some ARPA, we got a check in that I don't think we've allocated yet. So we, it's just kind of sitting out there, but it would go back into, to fund balance ultimately if we didn't spend it.
And if the economy continues to go downhill and, and we lose revenue and we're at a, not in the black anymore, then it starts coming out of fund balance to pay for things. Equipment's broken, lift station's gone down, whatever happens, um, we, we fall below that percentage on our fund balance and we get in trouble with, and leave municipalities and, or whoever that entity is, sort of governors that thing. So we, we just need to be careful, um, but we need to take care of the employees and, but I, I like option one because it gives us, um, at least a half percent for those years of service, we look at merit, we look at all those other things and, and move forward, but that's just my opinion.
There is, as Justin mentioned, there is one other item in here that I, I just, it's kind of the elephant in the room and that's board member pay. And I know that nobody is sitting here because they're going to get $100 a month pay. But if you look there and, uh, I, I asked Justin for this information, uh, the board member pay has been the same as it is since 2006. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't think we should make money serving, but I don't think we should, it should cost us to serve either. You know, like driving to meetings and going to meetings and things like that, those costs have gone up. So, and, and like I say, I'm not bragging, but you know, $92.35 a month, you know, nobody is here for that. But if, if we, like we're talking about here, if we want to keep up, since that's 16 years it's been the same, uh, I think it at least bears discussing whether or not, even if it's for future board members, not, not us, I'm not doing it for me, but I do think at some point in time, it bears addressing. Whether that's now or some other time, but like I say, it's been, it was $50 a month and it went to $100 a month in 2006, 16 years ago, so if you've bought a gallon of gas lately. So I do think we need to at least discuss it.
And who votes on that?
We do. And if, and, and I'm not saying change it, I'm just saying I think we need to talk about it and discuss it. Like I say, 16 years is, is, is a long time.
It is.
I think it definitely needs to be increased, especially for the mayor position, because, I mean, we don't, we don't have a lot of people interested in being mayor. And the last person that asked me how much the mayor got paid, uh, thought I was kidding when I told them.
I, I've, I've...
So I mean, seriously, that's, that's a lot of work.
It is.
And, and like I said, nobody really does it for the money, but still...
And if we double it, I mean, oh boy, I'm going to run school board, I'm going to make $200 a month. I mean, I mean, school board, I had that on my mind earlier, but town council.
Is that something that could be lumped in together with the pay study or that need to be a separate, just in case it went forward?
It could be lumped in.
Okay.
It's going to be a salary line item, so...
To move so long, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we proceed with option two, beginning on October the 1st. Also included in that motion that the council members' pay be raised to $200 a month and the mayor's pay be raised to $400 a month.
I second that.
All right, Mr. Green has made the motion for option two and to double the pay for council and mayor to two hundred and four hundred. Is that correct? And that second has been made by Ms. Gant. Further discussion, questions from council?
Where is option two at? What page number, please?
Is that the three quarters? Is that the?
That's.
Yeah, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight?
Yes, sir.
That'd be eighty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. If we do it October the first, sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven is the number that I wrote, I wrote down. Is that correct?
That's option one.
Option one's eighty-three, four, forty-nine.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the wrong line.
Option two's ninety-six, seven, sixty.
So, option two for October first would be seventy-two, five, seven.
That's right, seventy-two, five, seven.
Yeah, in the, in Ms. Brown's study, she has the yearly cost, so implementing, implementing it October first takes that down.
Other comments, discussion? All right, hearing none. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Make your mark as green. All those opposed, red. All right, that motion carries. I'll take the time here to thank council for that discussion. Uh, the tension between taking care of employees, but also being good stewards of the citizens' money was evident, uh, as it always is, but well done. Next item up for i- is moving to new business. And that takes us to page seventy-one. Considering the town commons waterline project and, uh, considering accepting the bid from Father and Son Enterprises, uh, which has been recommended by staff and Odom Engineering. Mr. Longinow, if there's additional information?
Uh, pretty straightforward, sir. So, this project was budgeted for ninety thousand dollars. Uh, we did bid it out two different ways, just not knowing what the price of things was gonna be. Um, but option two in the bid packet, um, is the preferred option. It gives us a bigger line. It gives us, um, a fire hydrant out in front of the public works facility out here and, uh, was still under, uh, under that ninety thousand. It was eighty-six, uh, two, four, zero. So, that's the one we're recommending.
Further questions or comments from council? If not, is there a motion to accept the bid for Father and Sons?
Make a motion to accept the bid for, and I guess it's option two for Father and Son.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thomas, for that motion.
Second motion.
Second from Mr. Green. All those in favor? Let it be known by casting your vote as yes. If you are opposed, then you can vote no. You got Pete that time? Said last time that this isn't as much fun for me because I don't get to say yea or nay, but now that you're racing over here, I, I like the electronic voting better.
Can we get a little thing like on Jeopardy?
Yeah.
All right, that motion has carried. I will now open a public hearing to consider the downtown overlay district at seven thirty-eight. First, uh, we will have a report from the staff.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, this is something you all have seen before. So, we took it to planning board and got some input, brought it to you all and got some input. And now, we've taken it back through sort of the formal process. Um, in between there, we had a community meeting and got some input as well. So, um, this is the map that, uh, for the area that's gonna designate the downtown overlay district. It's outlined in our unified development ordinance. Um, it's meant to bring things up to a certain standard as development occurs and updates are made to our downtown to give it sort of a consistent feel and make it feel, um, like more of a walkable downtown area. So, um, the planning board, uh, has recommended, um, option one, which to, which was to adopt the downtown overlay district, um, as presented in your map. Uh, I did have one note, parcels thirteen sixty-seven and thirteen sixty-nine that are noted near Memorial Drive here on this map, um, are a, um, an admissions building and a dormitory that are, uh, owned by Gardner Web. We talked about excluding the Gardner Web campus from this. Um, I didn't, we didn't have a discussion last time about those two buildings, if we should leave those out or, um, or leave them in. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, planning board decided that since it was adjacent to downtown businesses, that we should make it consistent, um, just along that road. Uh, really wouldn't change anything until, um, you know, if some major changes were gonna take place on the exterior of the building or something like that. So, um, it's really for new development that's gonna occur in the downtown district when, when someone's gonna, uh, some change is gonna take place. So, um, I'll open that up to, to you all for discussion, and that's, uh, that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public on this issue? Yes, sir?
Nate Evans, Gardner Web. When would this go into effect?
Uh, right after this vote.
Right after this.
Yeah. I would, but again, it wouldn't change anything until, I mean, if you all went to tear down the dorm, it would then have to be like built up to the front line of the road and some exterior standards would have to be applied. But as the building sits right now, it's not gonna, I'm not gonna knock on your door tomorrow and say, change the color of this or anything like that.
Can you point me to the page in the agenda? This is what the map you references on?
Yes, page.
The map's on seventy-seven.
Yeah, page seventy-six and seventy-seven.
Royster and not the web building was still across the street.
Some kind of admin building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's old doctor's office building.
Yeah.
Doctor's office building and then the old Royster hospital.
Any other, uh, comments from the public? All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing at seven forty-one. Questions and comments from council?
Well, I attended the planning and zoning meeting and there was, wasn't a lot of discussion about those two parcels that belonged to Gardner Web, but my personal opinion is I think we ought to exclude them.
Well, mine is different. I think we shouldn't. I would think if we want the continuity of the town, since they're so adjacent to the town, I would hope that they would want to be in concurrence with the, the rest. That, that's my opinion.
And for, for clarity for everybody, if, um, Gardner Web suddenly developed grand plans for those two parcels and came to you all and said, we wanted you to consider changing this, it would take two months to change it. So, it would go back through this process and you all could change that area. So, it's not anything that's permanently set in stone forever. It's designated and can be undesignated, re-designated, changed as, as we need to.
And it wouldn't stop them. Uh, this is just, it wouldn't stop them from tearing them down. It would just when they wanted to put something back.
Yeah.
And hopefully, the, the guidance and things we would have would be in agreement with what they would wanna do anyway.
Sure.
I would think their new building standards, looking at the rest of their campus, are gonna be plenty.
Personally, I wouldn't.
Sufficient.
I wouldn't see it as being, ever being an issue.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't.
I think I'm indifferent either way, honestly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I could see leaving thirteen sixty-nine in, but, and excluding Royster. I mean, Royster will eventually be torn down at some point in time, maybe not in my lifetime, but that's an old building that they don't have any specific use for right now, other than dorms.
My children were born there.
Yeah, it's old hospital. And the other property I had a concern or question about was that long property on Green Avenue. That's mainly residential housing.
And most of the standards, uh, would not apply to residential. So, um, if a business was gonna be built on that vacant corner or if those houses were torn down and it was gonna be a commercial structure, then the standards would apply, but.
Okay.
Residential's excluded.
I di- I did not notice that last time for some reason. That corner's not big enough to build anything on, is it?
Probably another skinny house, but I've, not much. It's, it's not very large.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Any other discussion or comments, or is there a motion to proceed?
I move to proceed with the overlay. Downtown overlay.
Do you wanna leave those two parcels in?
Leave them in.
Okay.
As, as presented. That's my motion.
All right, Mr. Green has made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Gant. Further discussion? Hearing none, council can cast their votes.
Don't beat me again.
Not that fast, are we?
All right, that motion carries four to one. We will now open a public hearing dealing with the unified, is this the floodplain?
Yes, sir.
So, the public hearing is open at seven forty-six. And we'll hear the report from the staff.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, we, we brought you, uh, some changes of the floodplain ordinance last month. Uh, we submitted those to the auditor from the state, and he said, oh, you need this paragraph in there, too. Um, it's a very simple paragraph that basically says this ordinance, um, repeals and replaces all previous ordinances. Um, he wanted to, to see that in there before he'd sign off on it. Um, I hate that we've had to bring it back again, but it's a very simple other addition, and we'll send it back to him and, um, that'll be good.
All right, are there any comments from those present who'd like to speak on this issue? All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing at seven forty-seven. Council, discussion or questions? If not, is there a motion to proceed?
Move to proceed.
Mr. Green with that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Edwards, I believe. All those in favor? Say aye electronically. And those opposed likewise. All right, that is carried. Thank you very much. Now, on to items for discussion. Down to page eighty-three on retail building renderings. Mr. Longinow?
Thank you, sir. Um, so, talked a little bit about this, uh, last month, but council wanted to, uh, wait till the full group was here to discuss it. But, um, you know, a couple of months ago, we, uh, decided to move forward with Talion Smith to do some renderings for the buildings out in front of town hall. Uh, they've just been kind of a square on a map in the downtown master plan until now. Um, Mr. Bob Smith worked on the renderings that are in your packet of what those buildings might look like and what the reconfiguration of, uh, some of the parking lot would look like. Um, I'd say comments were, were overall positive from the, um, downtown streetscape subcommittee that, uh, that looked over these and then from the discussion last month. Um, the decision or the guidance we're sort of looking for to move forward is, um, do you all want to ex- continue to explore this option? Um, do we wanna leave town hall as it is, uh, or do we wanna review it in some other form or fashion? Um, my, just my thoughts for, uh, for next steps would be to, um, have some, some deeper conversations with, uh, the county who's, uh, expressed some willingness to, uh, partner with us. Um, I've had preliminary conversations in sort of a broader sense, uh, about partnering with the county and Gardner Web with a, um, retail recruitment firm that could potentially help us fill the spaces. Um, we have a presentation that's gonna be in the next month or two from an economic development firm talking about kind of broader trends in the, uh, state and in the nation, um, that I think could help, uh, hone us in here a little bit more. So, um, my thoughts are to kinda come up with a heavy outline, if you will, of, of what we would do to, uh, to build this, how to pay for it, how to fill the spaces and, um, continue to, to sort of have those discussions. But, um, but also, if we don't like it, we don't have to do anything, so.
Comments, questions?
When we first started talking about it, I said, you know, nah, we're gonna, you know, leave, we've got a nice building that's, people coming into town to hear town hall. But, uh, the more I thought about it, the more I've seen, you know, uh, and several things. One, we got, we got space. And the other one is, we, if we want downtown business to grow, we, we have, we have no whore for it to grow. The things, so my, so my, my thinking has, has changed. I, I like the concepts that we've seen. I like the fact that we would own the property, that we could decide who, who's in, who's out, that we wouldn't have, we, we would not let it be neglected or we wouldn't let it fall bef- before substandard because of the, how much it means to us, and we, we, we would continue to own it. So, I, I'm, I'm in favor with going further with it. I, I've actually had discussion with some people that, uh, throw things around and was actually surprised that their, uh, eagerness or their, uh, thinking it wa- it possibly was a good idea. I think we, I think we could maintain the integrity of the town hall, which, like I say, is a very, very attractive building. But I think at the same time, we could grow downtown businesses, which we have, like I say, I've already said, we, we don't have a whore for downtown business to grow. So, and I would hope somewhere down the road that maybe other businesses that, and we mentioned like CBS property, you know, they have, they have space there, that if we could be successful with this project, then they might possibly be more interested in, in, in some of their out parcel or some of the other businesses who have, who, who have space. So, if we wanna grow downtown business, then we're gonna have to be more aggressive, and we have an opportunity here to do that. So, I'm in favor of proceeding. And, and we, we still are not, we still don't, we're not ready to start breaking ground yet, but I am in favor of at least pursuing, pursuing the idea. And maybe, you know, maybe there's some possible tenants who would say, you know, I, I'd like, I'd like to be there.
Is this something that we, you would need a motion to proceed with, with your heavy outline kinda idea, or?
I'd like that, yes. Yes, sir.
Other, other, that was just a point of clarification. Other comments for discussion, questions from, from council?
Uh, let me say, I'm not, I'm not in favor of saying, yes, let's do that, but I am in favor of pursuing it further.
Yeah, Tommy, the way I see it is we have a, you know, artistic conceptual design in front of us, right? And all we're asking Justin to do, and I say all, it is a big lift, but to spend some hours, some use, use some man-hours of the team to put together a conceptual execution package, right? It's like, hey, this, if we were gonna proceed with this, is how we would approach it. That's what we're out.
Yeah.
There's no commitment. I mean, let's hear, let's hear a draft idea of how we would pursue this further, considering all the other resources and stakeholders and all the tools we'd leverage to make it happen. What's that package look like? So, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it.
I am, too.
Someone make a motion and we'll second it real fast?
Well, I think it's really important. This, this East College Avenue, that whole corridor is really valuable to not only the town, but to Gardner Web University for future growth and where we wanna be. And I think it's a great concept originally. I was sort of like Tommy, I was like, Mr. Green, I was like, I'm not sure whether, how that would look, but it looks wonderful, and, and I think if we wanna grow our tax base as well, we're, we're gonna have to be willing to look at some of those heavy lifting projects and, and attract some more business. So, I'm in favor of it. So, I'll make a motion, uh, to instruct the staff to form a plan and to build and to attract some tenants. Is that what you need to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Thomas, uh, second by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Green?
I just gonna say, uh, I, I think that, uh, at some point in time, you know, we, we would seek public input, so.
Oh, absolutely.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, there's gonna be, there should be multiple.
Oh, yeah.
Opportunities during the different planning stages.
People I've even run it by, I haven't seen the draw. People I've even run it by, I haven't seen the drawings. When you talk to them about it, you know, they're, they're more on board than I thought they would be.
Any other comments, question? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
It was easier to say aye.
No, I appreciate the good discussion. That was wonderful.
Motion carries. Maybe hit Sydney. There it is. All right, that is unanimous. All right, next item is on page ninety-two. Looking for consensus on how to proceed with the Ford pickup truck. Received bids that did not meet the reserve price, so didn't release the vehicle. Now having conversations with the Broad River Greenway, who Lance is driving that old Ranger.
Yes, the Danger Ranger, as we call it.
But the county's looking to help us out as well, so I'll let you fill in the details.
Thank you, sir. So a few months ago, you all voted to have us surplus that vehicle. Since then, well, we did list it, but we had conversations with the Greenway about a replacement vehicle. The county currently owns the Ranger that, the park ranger drives, the Ranger that Mr. Rollins drives. So we've had some preliminary conversations with them. Would they be willing to, you know, work with us? Because we did get bids of two thousand or ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. So could they, could they work something out? Because typically they've also donated the vehicle from, from their fleet. So they're agreeable to that. We haven't worked out specifics of kind of who does what. My thinking is to approach them to see if they can get close to that ten thousand dollar number. It does need about fifteen hundred dollars worth of front end work. So my thought was if they would get close to ten thousand, we could pay for the front end work and then transfer it to the Greenway. And they can sell the Ranger that they've got to recoup a few thousand dollars out of that ten thousand. But all, all signs point to that being an agreeable transaction. I just haven't put the specifics out there and laid that out for them.
Comments from counsel on that direction for Mr. Longinow?
I mean, I'm in favor of donating to a good cause, right, but seems like the auction was a better outcome for the final result, right? If we were strictly looking at funds. We're also talking about a few hundred dollars or maybe fifteen hundred bucks difference. So I mean, for the sentiment of the Greenway, I'm not opposed to that, but if we were being physically responsible and looking for every option to keep that black number black, I'm indifferent, honestly.
Other comments?
I guess you do have to take into consideration Justin's time and all the resources put into managing and trying to get the auction taken care of where, if it's a donation to the Greenways, maybe a little less work. There's that counter.
What was it listed for on GovDeals? Did you say, what was the minimum?
The minimum, I think, started out at seven or eight thousand, but it got up to ten thousand, two fifty-one. And we set the reserve at twelve or fifteen, just to kind of see what we could get. Because we'd started having those conversations with the Greenways, so we were like, well, if we can get fifteen thousand for it, that might be okay. But it got up to ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-one.
And the town will continue to benefit from the work that truck puts in for the Greenway. So I mean, it's not a, not a total loss that, that way either, so.
And just so I make sure I made it clear, the ask would be for the county to pay us or to pay the Greenway and then to pay us the ten thousand and then we would pay the fifteen hundred or so for the front end work, just as a.
So we'd be getting ten thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Compared to the auction, so, yeah.
So you need just consensus what, what you want done?
Yes, sir, yeah. If y'all are good with that, I'll approach the county and we'll get that specific deal worked out and come back to you for a final.
I'm good with working out a deal with the county.
Okay.
Yep. And I was already ready to vote.
All right, last, I believe, but not least, the pet waste station discussion of adding in some of those on opposite ends of town?
Yes, sir. We just wanted to get some feedback from you all about placing two pet waste stations near sidewalks in town. I know that's been a concern that's been brought up a couple of times. So our thoughts were to place two of the stations that are attached in your packet, one towards the north end of the sidewalk that runs up North Main. So between like East Homestead and High Point and then the other one down here in front of the Old Town Hall on South Main. These wouldn't have trash receptacles. My, my first concern with that was, do we have the trash truck stopping in the middle of the road to run over and empty a little trash can? So I thought if we'll, we'll put these out there and hope that people will do the first right thing and pick up after their pet and then do the second right thing and take it home with them and throw it away in their trash can. If we end up with bags all over the road, we can always redisess, revisit this and add a trash can to it. But this seemed like a good first step to try and help with that problem.
And how do we plan to get approval or right of way to put them at certain spots?
We'll be able to put them right next to the sidewalk, so it should still be within our existing right of way. And then South Main won't be a problem with the Old Town Hall.
Okay, okay.
I mean, for four hundred bucks for two staff installed in, what, a couple hours as an experiment? Okay.
Just a thumbs up or consensus will be fine.
Major opposition. The doggy bags. And I apologize, that was not last. We need to discuss the Cleveland Cup, which is a five K race. Staff would seek to close Town Hall on ten fourteen at two P M. so that they can participate in this race for county employees. Seeing Justin's Christmas pants, I think maybe he's got some five K outfits as well. Could be worth going out and.
You'll have to, you'll have to show up to see.
If it's okay with counsel, then Town Hall would be closed at two P M. that day. If there is.
Only if they can assure they're going to win.
That's right.
So you really, you win the Cleveland Cup by having the highest percentage of employees sign up for the race. So we don't have to.
They just have to sign up, they don't have to race?
Yes, sir, we don't have to run.
But you can sign up and then still not close the Town Hall and win.
I hadn't thought about that. They might want us to show up to the race.
I, I think it's great.
And council members are also invited to participate, so.
That's okay.
If you all would make a motion for that, I'd appreciate it.
Is there a motion to agree that Town Hall will be closed at two P M. on the day of the Cleveland Cup, which is next Friday?
I'll make that form of motion.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Green with a second. Any other discussion?
Does that, does that follow any billing periods where people are coming in last minute for a, okay?
No, sir, we should be good.
In the middle of the month, I didn't think so, but, okay. No further discussion.
All right, all those in favor? Cast your vote, say aye, make it green. All right. And that was not last either. We have a question about reverting to the landlord policy. Staff is seeking feedback. Justin, I'll let you.
Yes, sir. Really just wanted to give you all a heads up and make sure there was no opposition. But we've, we've heard from a few people that the way the policy is worded now, if, if a landlord owns a property and a tenant moves in, the tenant comes in and puts the utilities in their name. If the tenant moves out, everything is cut off and locked up and the landlord has to come in and put the utilities in their name and then get the water turned back on, clean it up, and then they take it out of their name. The new tenant puts it in their name and it's kind of this, this cycle. So we can make some minor changes to our policy to allow landlords to come in and basically sign an agreement, put one deposit down and then in between tenants, any funds are taken out of that deposit and it goes automatically into their name and a new tenant can come in and put it into their name. So really just kind of a smoother transition between tenants for, for some of the property owners in town. Just wanted to make sure you all were okay with that and we'll start working on an actual formal policy.
I mean, ultimately the accounts are tied to that address regardless of who's on the listing, right? You could always see the account balance for that address.
Yeah.
Everybody okay?
Go for it.
Very good. All right, Mr. Longinow?
Thank you, sir. I'll try and talk fast, keep it short, since I know we're getting a little long. So counsel should start to consider nominating a grand marshal for the Christmas parade. That is coming up very soon. So I think typically in the past, councils just made a motion to, to appoint someone to that position.
With no criteria? I mean, I mean, that's a serious question. Do we just, whoever, I think somebody just bringing their name up and we talk about it?
Yes, sir, yeah. Okay. Any nominations from?
I would nominate Kim. Kim Green for three decades of service.
Okay. If you'll.
That big smile waving through.
Do we need a motion and a second?
Yeah, if you'll ask for a motion, sir, we'll make it formal.
I'd make a motion that we ask Kim Green to be our grand marshal for the parade.
A second.
Mr. Thomas with the motion. Ms. Gantz with the second. All those in favor?
Say aye.
Say aye, yeah.
Awesome.
No, it wasn't good.
Yes.
There have been, or there has been over the last couple of days, a slight water quality issue from the city of Shelby. They've made some Facebook posts that we've shared. The, I'm not a, an expert on rivers and bodies of water, but apparently at certain times of year, streams and rivers can kind of turn over, so things are stirred up that aren't normally there throughout the year. And this time of year, some things have been stirred up and the water tastes a little different. It's still safe to drink. They've, they've done a lot of testing. They've done a lot of flushing. We've done a lot of flushing and testing as well. Everything's within normal limits. It's just the taste is a little different. So that's been over the last couple of days. They, city of Shelby said they've already noticed improvements in locations closer to the water treatment facility. So that should begin to work itself out as things are flushed out and shouldn't be a problem in the next day or two. But kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up in case you hear from anyone about it. Let's see, so early voting is going to be at Town Hall on October twentieth. The schedule, the full schedule is posted online for times and the full days, but it starts on October twentieth. So there will be voting stations here for a while. Our E V, electric vehicle charging grant was formally approved this afternoon. They've sent some like preliminary approvals because they've still been waiting for some, basically the funding to flow through. I think some people up the chain haven't signed some things, but everything has been signed and we got the official approval this afternoon to go ahead and move forward with actually implementing the charging stations and putting those in downtown. So we will start working on that and hopefully see some dirt moving soon up there. We have a open position in the Public Works Department. We have two open positions, actually. The solid waste worker position that's been open for quite some time, although we have two interviews scheduled for, for this week. And we also have a position open in the public work supervisor position. So the position that Joe Francis previously held has, has come open and we've gotten several applications for that and have started, well, we're going to start scheduling interviews in the next couple of days. So just want to put that out there. That's posted on the, the website and various other places. But if you know anybody that wants to apply, send them our way. The in-house part of the audit was completed last week, so Rhonda breathed a big sigh of relief. But that all seemed to go smoothly and went well, so we look forward to them coming and presenting the full audit to us in just a couple of months. The parallel spots on East College that we talked about a month or so ago were not approved by D O T. They came out and measured and observed and you need ten feet basically for that to, to be able to be put in. And we have nine foot, six inches, so not quite. They also felt like it would have been a problem with cars parked there and some of the vehicles that travel through there. So they opted not to allow us to do that, but I think we've got some bigger changes coming with those buildings out front, so those have gotten in the way anyway. Still working through the intersection conflict system. The company we've used for the crosswalks and that we've discussed with the D O T about putting in the intersection conflict system is not, is apparently not an approved D O T system. So I sent them everything formally and said, here you go. And they said, oh, you can't use that company. You need to use another company. So we're getting a quote from the other company and going to, going to resubmit, so working through the difficulties on that. Two more things. We won sort of a contest. So there is an economic development consulting firm that typically gives away a big consulting prize once a year. It's called Creative E D C. This is their tenth anniversary and they're giving away small prizes ten different months throughout the year. So we won the prize of having them give a virtual presentation to us on economic development trends within our region, state and nation. So Crystal Morpheus, who runs Creative E D C, will be attending virtually in the next month or two to kind of give us a broad presentation just about economic development trends. And I think that'll feed in nicely with some of the things that we've got going on, but no, no cost to us for that. Still be great to have her here. And I wanted to give a quick update on Roosters. I talked to the owner, Mr. Frankie Cochran, right before I went out of town. It was about two weeks ago now. And he previously had someone interested in purchasing the building. That fell through, so he said he was moving forward with ordering roof trusses to rebuild the, the roof and then the interior. I do have a floor plan that he sent me that looks nice. It's all going to be one big space and with a bar restaurant area. I need to check in with him and see how long it's going to take him to get those roof trusses. So I'm sure that'll be a little bit of a longer timeframe, but he is moving forward with that. I'll tap out there.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Green?
A couple of things. Had an M P O meeting. I meant to, and I thought about it on the way there, that I should have contacted Pat to see, or Mr. Litten to see if he wanted to attend that meeting with me, which I failed to do that, but I'll make sure I do that next time if you'd like to, if you'd like to go along. I had a good meeting. They did approve a letter of support for the grant that Justin is, has or is applying for. It's one of the all-state, it's S S four A grant. So they did move to endorse that project with a letter of support, which appreciates that. And just some other information, you know, we're a member of Division Twelve with D O T. D O T, D O T received a hundred million dollar grant from the new infrastructure. The only one in the state and the largest one in the country. So they're, they were being committed for that. And if I heard this, they didn't talk about it a lot, but I heard this correctly, part of what they're going to do with some of those funds is they're going to, they're going to make Interstate eighty-five from three twenty-one to the state line, four lanes on each side. So, so that was interesting. A couple of other things. Make some notes somewhere. Oh, yeah. I've had a few questions about golf carts. And some, somebody who already has a golf cart, somebody is concerned in getting one, and exactly where can I ride it? Because there, there's anywhere in the town limits, the speed limit's less than thirty-five mile an hour, but exactly where is that? You know, where does, you know, I mean, there were serious questions, you know, does a city, when we have our welcome signs, is that where the city limit starts? And the answer to that is no. So I just wondered if there was a map or some, a map we could develop to give when they apply for a permit or post on our website, so somebody could be, you know, am I in violation of, of the law or not? And through their own ignorance or just by not knowing. So I thought that was.
Absolutely, yeah.
Something worth, worth pursuing.
Yeah, I'll comment on that.
Sure.
One of the speed limits, forty-five on the other side of the hill on my end of town, nobody on that end of town can even ride a golf cart up here.
That's, that's, I got that note.
Forty-five starts after you pass the Hill Church Regent's. Legally, nobody else on the side of that hill can ride a golf cart up there.
In fact, one of the first people who asked me was someone. In fact, one of the first people who asked me was someone who had been riding his golf cart on that strip. And I told him he was in violation of the law. You know, he says he's in the town, but anyway. So, that's a, that's a reason, two reasons for us to address the, the concern of the speed limit. If we can get that speed limit reduced. Of course, I know that's not up to us, but although we could petition to have it reduced, could we not?
We can, yes, sir.
Yeah, I commented on that also. I should have all looked at, whenever they put the bike trail in, I brought the town manager at that time, the pension and the contractor. And they told me, the state told them where to put those signs. Well, I called, and they couldn't change them. Well, I called the state and they said, we don't have anything to do with that. The town wants to set the speed limits on that road.
That's, 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 that's not true, is it? We don't set the speed limit. We don't set, on any state road, we can't, in next, we don't set the speed limit, do we?
We can petition, have it changed.
We, we can petition to have it changed and I would suggest that we investigate that. And I also thought the, I can see the conflict in the name of the two, two streets, which we, we can, we can change, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I think maybe we need to...
I'm gonna figure out what his wife's name is, we're gonna name it after her.
I can tell you after me.
Okay, all right.
He didn't hear that.
I said, I'm gonna figure out...
We're gonna name it after your wife, that street.
Well, I really don't want to say the name changed, but it's just a problem at times.
And I, and I kind of understand that problem, you know.
One computer system don't do it and another computer system will, you know, revert to side plan.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I don't know what's, what the problem is up to the system.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that for sure.
We can look at that. And the other thing is, I have a, someone asked a question, I didn't know how to... If, if someone wanted to initiate, to initiate the adoption of a new ordinance in town, what's that process? In, in ten words or less?
They can reach out to me first.
Okay.
We'll see what it is they're looking to change. But, then they probably will need to come to the council meeting, request you all to direct us to look into it.
Okay. Good enough?
That was fourteen words, I think.
Yeah.
That's it, me.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Litten?
I'm glad to hear that we have two people interested in working with Public Works and Mr. Gilbert. And I, I commented the previous month, you know, that, that job, I forget the category or number it was, but it's the lowest paying job we have, it's right at fourteen fifty. So, I hope you have some room, wiggle room to go up and recruit so he can get the folks he needs to run the work. So, do a good job. But, you know, you, you need bodies in positions as best we can. I hope we can continue to look at that livestock ordinance going, going forward. And I know that's a work in process. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Well, Mr. Green spoke with, about the address issue and the street name and all that, so thank you. I just wanted to comment on the staff for pivoting and working under pressure on the Zoom call. That was a, I know that can be interesting and for, first time, it's always troublesome. So, I would maybe suggest that since we can pull up tabs on our screens, maybe we have the overall Zoom meeting on one page. And maybe we implement just one microphone and the whole community can see what's happening in the future. So, it's just something to consider.
For sure.
Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, so we already talked about the electric vehicle charging station. That was one thing I wanted to, to bring up. We talked about Mr. Self's, the speed limit and that all. So, two things have been knocked out. So, the, the third thing I want to talk about is merit increases. Or, do we have that built in for our employees now to be able to receive merit?
Yes, sir, we do. So, every budget year, that can change. Last year, I think we did two percent COLA, three percent merit. This year, we did two percent COLA, two percent merit. So, the COLA goes to everybody and then the merit is based on how individual employees score on their performance reviews.
Because I, like, like Ms. Cant said, we do have to account for inflation. But, it always helps if you're working really hard and you're doing a super job that we reward the employees.
Sure.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cant?
Yeah, and that's a good point too, Marty. We don't want to be paying employees, you know, a, a very good wage and, and them not be very good employees. I, I see that every day in, in my field. So, it's definitely something that should stay with the, keeping up with the merit raises. I don't have much to say. I think we got a lot accomplished this meeting. And I feel good about everything that we've talked about. So, I'm very pleased.
Thank you. Thank everyone for your patience. I do have a couple of things. I try not to end the meeting with more stuff. But, one of our most engaged citizens I see is here, Ms. Daphne. She offered me a presentation. We met a couple of weeks ago with her concern about solicitors in town. And would, would you like to speak? You don't have to, that's not something, I just wanted to give you the opportunity if you want to. Just very briefly, if you want to tell the council what your ideas are? Or I can tell them, either way? Yes, please, if you, if you don't mind?
I wanted to do a town-wide ban on solicitors, because then it would be easier on officers. Because if we just have a city-wide ban on solicitors, then they know if somebody comes and knocks on the door, they don't have the paper they have to have to sell stuff, then we don't, then the officers don't have to look at a map to figure out which one has the ban on solicitors. So, they just automatically know the entire city has a ban on it, so they don't have to look at a map. It's just easier on them. And it's less irritating for residents, because there was a solicitor that came to one of our neighbor's houses and they said, you, these are nice houses, I guess you have a, a lot of money to waste. Because she didn't, she was asking her to leave and she didn't want to buy the stuff that she had. And that's just not something you want to hear when you're eating your bowl of cereal. And it's safer for people, like the people that live in our neighborhood, some of them are older and then some of them are just by themselves. And they would, it would feel, it would make them feel better that they know that people aren't coming in their neighborhood selling stuff and knowing where they live and if they're by themselves or how old they are. And have an idea of what their house looks like to where maybe they know where they work and what time they might leave. And it's a better option instead of an H.O.A., because then we don't have to have like these cameras everywhere to know where the solicitors are coming from and to get, and to keep track of their tags. Because then they probably, many of them won't be coming into the neighborhood because there will be a ban and they don't want to get in trouble. But, that's just the reason why I wanted to do the ban on solicitors.
Thank you, Daphne.
Thank you.
So, if that's perhaps something we can discuss as council going forward, the solicitor ban perhaps, potential? I do want to brag on Daphne. She came to a community meeting that we had several weeks back and she spoke out very eloquently. She's engaged. I told her that she was, she needed to come and teach my civics classes because she understands what it means to be a good citizen. And also came and approached me with a, she had a, a tri-fold, a board, you know, and, and a whole presentation with a pointer and everything. I mean, it was really spectacular. So, thank you for, for coming to speak. Two more things real briefly. And, and one of them is, I hope to be able to, that we can reach out and maybe have Laura Beaver come to, to address the council about this. I know Mr. Edwards was there at the last Cago meeting and the issue was dealing with PALS, a literacy initiative that Cleveland County Schools is pushing. And perhaps the ways that we could look into helping out. I've, I've had the opportunity to go and read to some first and second graders the last couple of weeks and it's just been really fantastic. But, ways that we can promote reading and literacy as a town, that's been really impactful for me, just seeing those, seeing those kids. And, and last thing, just a reminder that our, our next meeting will be on November eighth. We moved that from the first, which would typically be our meeting day, because early voting will be held here in Town Hall. So, November eighth is the date for our next meeting at six thirty. Anything else? Thought I will entertain a motion to adjourn? So moved. And I heard a second from Mr. Edwards. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you very much, everybody.
That's a good idea. Nah, that's not, nah, 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 we shouldn't do that.
Take care.